Father, thank you so much for this glorious day, this beautiful community. Please give us our strength, guidance, and wisdom as we deliberate this evening. And thank you so much for the freedoms and liberty we enjoy in this great country. And I would ask for a special prayer for our first responders and police across the country. Please look over them and get them home safely every night. In your son's name, we ask his blessing. Amen.
... states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum tonight, so I thank everybody for coming. Announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have an upcoming community meeting. It's on Tuesday, July 26 at 7:00 PM at the Chancellor Community Center at 7,300 Old Plank Road. And the topic of the meeting is a 150-foot telecommunications tower that is proposed at 3,900, in the 3,900 block of Plank Road, and that is in the Cortlandt Voting District.
Excuse me, what date was that?
That is Tuesday, July 26.
Twenty-six, seven.
At 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes. I presume everybody's had a chance to review. Any comments on those minutes?
Move for approval.
Mr. Chairman, just one correction on the approval of the minutes. It should read that Ms. Carter called the meeting to order.
Fully noted. Any other comments? Do I have a second? I'll call the vote, please. We have four and approved, two abstained. Next item, I guess we have a review and approval of a plat. Kimberly.
Mr. Chairman. Flore computer, please. This is a preliminary plat for the Thorburn Estate subdivision. This is the result of a rezoning that was approved in December of 2014. You'll recall this came before you back in November. It was due to code requirements that it had to come before the Planning Commission to reset that review clock. There were still outstanding items, technical issues with the plat that needed to be addressed. The plat has been revised to address all of those technical comments, and so it is ready for your approval. This is for 58 single-family detached lots. They range in size from two to five acres. They'll be served with private well and septic, public roads within the development. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing no questions, I'll take a motion. The chair will move to approve the plat.
Second.
Call the vote, please. That is unanimous. Next item. We have a public hearing. CPA 16-001.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is the continuation of the public hearing related to the thoroughfare plan update. The original, or the opening of the public hearing occurred in early June. Just to run through the proposed amendments, the thoroughfare plan is Chapter Three of the comprehensive plan. The plan itself was adopted in November of 2013, and there have been no changes to the thoroughfare plan since then. So we are proposing several updates to reflect changes to proposed projects and new studies that have occurred since adoption of the plan. I'll run through the major updates. The first one is I-95 at exit 126. We are eliminating the Jackson Gateway Interchange, which was a separate full interchange proposed south of exit 126, replacing it with an I-95 exit 126 study area. And so we're depicting that on this map as a gray area between the city boundary and Massaponix Church Road. There are a number of different projects being considered at this point in time, either through FAMPO or VDOT, and under discussion at the Transportation Committee. Some of these could include a new interchange at Harrison Road, and if that were to occur, these studies show that it would greatly relieve both exit 126 and the exit at Route Three. And there is a proposal at exit 126 that is moving forward at this point in time for the new round of House Bill Two funding that is a change to the exit itself of I-95 down onto Route One and some changes to Route One there between the exit and South Point Parkway. This map also shows some proposed intersection improvements within the plan. We are, under this House Bill Two funding, going to apply under the district option for some smaller projects, and these might rank highly. These are intersection improvement projects that would add turn lanes, enhance safety, and enhance the traveling public through those areas. To Route Three, we are proposing to eliminate the six-lane improvement of Route Three that is currently in the comprehensive plan, and that is from just west of Andorra Drive to the Orange County line, and replace it with the Route Three arterial management plan. And the Planning Commission has had a couple of work sessions related to this plan in the past. It looks at closing crossovers and providing improvements at the remaining crossovers to enhance safety at those areas. This plan is proposed to be triggered by development. As you know, this area of Route Three is not within the county's growth area. So the proposal is, is that as growth does occur through this corridor, the plan would be referenced to see what types of improvements might be appropriate. The Spotsylvania Parkway is the next one. The proposal is to extend a road from the terminus of Spotsylvania Parkway to Gordon Road. This dashed line on the map is the symbol that we use for a concept road. This means that this is not the alignment. This is generally the two areas we're trying to connect. There have been studies done that show that this road would greatly relieve Smith Station Road between Courthouse Road and Gordon Road, to the point that it would not need to be widened to four lanes. And as you know, that road has many houses close to the road, and four-laning that road would have some pretty significant impacts to existing residences. This is a concept road. It would need to be prioritized by the Board of Supervisors and funding put towards it before it could move into a project, become a true project, at which point studies would be done to determine alternatives for the alignment and the exact configuration of the road. We're assuming at this point it's a four-lane divided roadway, consistent with the existing Spotsylvania Parkway. The Planning Commission asked that we hold an informational meeting related to the Spotsylvania Parkway extension concept, and this was held June 27. We sent out 235 letters to property owners in the area, and in particular, this area here, between Smith Station Road and the study area, and then, of course, properties within the study area. As you can see, it's a fairly wide study area, trying to stay away from any residences, and then, of course, staying to the west of the Nye River. There are about 30 people that attended that meeting. We received 11 comments, either on the comment form itself that we provided, or we also had maps, and we had sticky notes where people could write notes and put them at appropriate places on the maps. We did post all of the information from the meeting to the web as well, and the comments that were provided at that meeting were all included in your packets this evening. The final project is to Route 606, and this is to incorporate the Route 606 corridor study by reference in the comprehensive plan. This is a plan that shows the widening of Route 606 to a four-lane divided road. It includes an idea of a roundabout midway between I-95 and Route One. The board did adopt the plan on May 12 of 2015, and the county received House Bill Two funding to move the project forward last year. So this project is now at the survey stage. Property owners recently received letters from VDOT, letting them know that people would be out surveying and studying the area. So this project, though, within our comprehensive plan, it's simply to adopt the corridor study. It's not the engineered plan that has yet to be developed. And just to speak to a couple of items that came up either at the original public hearing for this item or last meeting when I gave a brief update. The items that I've covered in this presentation that are part of the comprehensive plan update, they do not need to be recommended to the board as a whole. They can be picked apart, essentially, so that the majority of them could move forward, and the Planning Commission could recommend that certain items do not move forward into the comprehensive plan. I will say that the Route 606 corridor plan, this does not need to be adopted into the comprehensive plan. This is already a project that's moving forward. It will not affect anything either related to our funding or the project moving forward if the Planning Commission should choose not to recommend this project at this point in time. I know at the last meeting, there was some discussion about allowing this project to move forward into the VDOT public hearing stage before we take it up again. So that would be completely appropriate if the Planning Commission wishes to make that recommendation. So with that, I'm available for any questions. I have asked Shawn Nelson from VDOT to be here as well, to help with answering any questions related to VDOT projects.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, maybe Mr. Nelson could come up and join Mrs. Parrish, so if we have questions, he'll be there. And as Doug, I would ask that you invite our transportation person, too. Thank you. I don't want Wanda to have to sit down in the hot seat all by herself. Thank you, sir.
Questions at this point?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. 606, let me go there for just a moment. VDOT, where are you with that 606?
Currently, right now, as Ms. Parrish had indicated, we're actually out surveying right now for that project. It's in the very early preliminary stages of engineering. The funding just came on for this project and was approved through HB2, formerly HB2, now Smart Scale. So the county was able to get $21.25 million for this project as a whole. So right now, we're working through the process of preliminary engineering to work up toward a public hearing to move the project forward.
You're working toward a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know and to hear. All right. Thank you for right now.
Please, Chair, this 606 project, you've got it, it's going to be four-lane divided?
Yes, sir.
And why are you dividing it?
Well, there was an access management study that was done to show that in order to get the throughput from I-95 back to Route One and from Route One to 95, to keep the traffic moving back and forth, to eliminate the lefts across, the study showed that a four-lane divided section was the best.
Yeah, but doesn't that hamper the businesses on that road?
It potentially does hamper the businesses on the road.
Do you have a...
I don't know if we can pull the sketch up. I think a part of this is that we've allowed for lefts to be made at two points. So if you're coming from Route One, and let's say you wanted to make a left to go to the Taco Bell, you would have to pass it and make a left up by Dan Bell Lane to make a U-turn to get back to it. There's two spots on 606. You can make a left as you're going from 95 towards Route One at the post office to make a U-turn to get back, or as you're going from Route One towards 95 at Dan Bell, let's say if you wanted to go to Taco Bell, you can make a U-turn at Dan Bell to get to the Taco Bell.
Is this a roundabout in the middle of this thing?
Yes, sir.
Well, let me ask you this. Theoretically, couldn't you go into the roundabout and make your U-turn that way?
You wouldn't be far enough down. So if you were going...
Oh, I see. What we want to hear. Yeah. I wish there was a way you could connect these businesses more friendly to the road.
Like I said, we're early on in the process, and I think a big part about the Smart Scale project is that once you define a scope in your application, if you change it any, you risk going back to be rescored, which you could lose your funding. Now, if there are other options that we wanted to potentially consider to enhance this project that increased the estimate, the county would then potentially utilize something like revenue sharing, where they provide half the funds and the state provide half the funds. Like for these future, see this sketch that has future roads constructed by others?
Right.
That could be an option.
Thank you.
Isn't that going to create an issue for public safety? What are the fire trucks going to have to do? Aren't they going to have to go all the way down and make a U-turn to come back if there's an issue on the other side?
Yes, they would have to do that.
How are they supposed to make, how are they supposed to make U-turns with those big trucks?
I mean, they can make a U-turn through the roundabout now. If you were trying to make a U-turn at Dan Bell, that could be potentially an issue. But like I said, at this point, we haven't gone through the design to know if the radius is big enough for a fire truck to make that turn.
The next question is the turnabout. Right now, if we have an accident on interstate, traffic, depending on where it's at, can be...
Divert it to 95 or Route One.
Right. Come off of 606 onto Route One. And obviously, there's a traffic signal there that we can control, the county can control. Isn't this going to back up traffic even more with this roundabout, trying to get traffic off the interstate, back out onto Route One?
Well, you've got two lanes that are going through that roundabout, so I don't know how it would back up. If it's trying to get from 95 to Route One, and you've got two lanes going through a roundabout, I'm not sure how you would...
Well, you still, you still got traffic coming on Route One, the other side of 606, that are all going to meet right there at that roundabout.
Yeah, but as of, as of right now, as is shown, there's nothing on either side of that roundabout for traffic to even, unless it was trying to make a U-turn to go back to, let's say, the 7-Eleven. So I'm not sure how many people are going to be making that movement. And if it was a situation where it was an emergency, state police could say, "No, you can't make that movement." You've got two lanes going through the roundabout, which is more efficient than a signal, if you ask me.
Absolutely, Ms. Commissioner.
Shawn, I have never understood why that a U-turn is much safer than turning lanes to go into businesses. I mean, I don't say one here and one here, but at least every two. Why? Those turning, U-turns scare me to death when it's a whole lot of traffic. I mean, they are terrible.
I don't disagree. You're talking about U-turns as far as at Dan Bell and at the post office?
Wherever, honey.
Yeah, well, I mean...
I'm, I'm, sir.
The only other option would be to allow lefts everywhere. And then, how do you pick which businesses gets the lefts? So the other alternative, which was in the access management study, was to not put a median there and to put a twiddle lane, a two-left turn lane, reverse turn lane down the middle. But at that point in time, you've got people fighting and jockeying, and having, in my opinion, it's more unsafe than a U-turn.
But that type of lane would be more appealing to businesses in the area, because it doesn't restrict the access to their businesses.
Yes, I agree, but it does not prevail itself to getting traffic from 95 to Route One and from Route One to 95.
But you would still have the two lanes, correct?
Yes.
With a, with the twin, what'd you call it?
Twiddle, we call it a twiddle lane.
Twiddle lane in the middle. Twiddle in the middle.
Yeah.
Right? So you still have your, you still have your two lanes going back and forth.
Then you've got those people jockeying to make those lefts everywhere.
If I could make a comment, I just came back from Nag's Head, and the big road in Nag's Head is wall-to-wall traffic. It's bumper to bumper, and they've got that pass, that turning lane in the middle, and I'm telling you, it's bumper to bumper, and nobody down there has any problem making left turns.
Chicken lanes, and they don't. He's right.
They don't have any problem with, and I'm telling you, the traffic that we're talking about here is nonexistent compared to the traffic down there. It doesn't exist, and they don't have any problem with that middle lane turning at all.
Is the, is the middle lane an option without going back to HB2?
No.
So this, this project was approved with the...
The project is approved...
With the median.
As shown here.
So what, what degree could we make changes to that without affecting HB2?
Like I said earlier, if the future roads as constructed by others on here would be a potential option, which would increase the amount of the project, which you, you can't do that unless it's funded by another source.
I didn't think it mattered with HB2. I thought with the, what did you say, ladies and gentlemen?
Go ahead, Mr. Barr.
Shawn, so obviously, we're wedded to this design, at least VDOT is at this point, with the access management study and with the HB2 money that's already been funded for it. Am I correct?
Correct.
So the only thing you're saying is if you wanted to do something different, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking at some other interparcel connecting roads that would be funded by the county and some other means, whether it's revenue sharing or whatever source that we decide, but that's not going to change the design of the road?
No.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So the, in order, and if the county was just to say, "Hey, look, your design just really, we don't like it for whatever the reason, all good respect to your access management study, but we don't feel as there," and I understand VDOT, VDOT looks at it from getting from point A to point B, always has, Route Three was same way, and there are some concerns there, but if the county was to say, "We really have some real concerns there," then, and we wanted some other design, what you're doing basically is saying that we're wedded to this design if we want the HB2 money, and if we don't, we'd have to go back through
Yes.
The process again, and with no guarantee that you would get the money.
Correct. And I mean, I just will say that I think prior to going through this, I thought we did a pretty good job of vetting it through the county to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, but we know, but you also know there are some businesses there that have still, that have some very strong concern. I have some concerns myself.
Well, I mean, I know we also had a citizen information meeting on the 20th of May in 2014, and I think we had a total of 12 comments that we got.
I understand, Shawn, but what happens is the reality of what's really happening kind of kicks in, in, you know, and I understand you have the meetings, you're required to have the meetings, but as it kind of comes in. So my question is, at the time you had it in 2014, did we have this design?
We had a preliminary sketch that was showing that it was going to be a four-lane section, and at the meeting, it was explained that it was going to be a divided section.
It was a roundabout?
Yes.
All right. But I think what's happened is when we get closer to the project, however, that's, that's where it becomes a reality of what it is. So I just, there are some real, real concerns, and what it is, we're in a real, we're in a real difficult part right here, because we need the project, because it's a bottleneck portion that needs to be solved. And the commission has concerns, as well as residents and businesses, about, you know, the design of it, which we really don't have a say in the design, that's not our purview, but at the same time, it is our purview to say that we're concerned about the effect that it's going to have.
Well, not only businesses, too. As I stated, Wanda, before, property owners out there that haven't, they haven't, the businesses are not located yet, and of course, the property owners, when they have a client to come in, that's the first thing they looked at. What kind of access do we have, you know, at that area? And, but I know you all get beat up sometimes at the end of it, and however, and we just, well, we have to look at it, you know, in different ways, I would think, you know, too, and what it would be. But I don't understand, even if a little change is made as far as turning lanes, then we were not qualified for the HB money.
Well, it's not just a little change. You have to realize that the, the project was scored based on an intent for safety, operational performance, and a whole bunch of other factors. If you change the operational aspects of the project and the merit that it was scored on, it could potentially have scored less. So would this project have then got the, the funding? If it had a reverse turn lane in the middle? I don't know, but we would have to find out if we changed it to that.
You'd have to go through that process again.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm not here to shoot the messenger, okay? But I just don't understand this whole process, because basically, what we've been told is, "VDOT, this is what we're going to do, and if you want to make any changes, we could lose some money, or we could pay for it." And I don't even know why we're going to have a public meeting, because what difference does it make if what people say, if we've, if we already decided what we're going to do?
Well, Mr. Smith, let me make one, one point. The department does not submit the applications for these projects. The application was submitted by the county.
I understand that.
And it was vetted through the county, the intent of this project. So the department may have provided recommendations of what we thought was a valid project for this area, but this was a project that was supported by the county and submitted by the county. So, I mean, and that's why, when it's submitted by the county, if there's changes that are made, those, those things should have been thought about upfront. So you're saying you don't know why VDOT's saying that we're going to have to go back and re-score, because there was a, there was a process put through, put in place with metrics that provided transparency to this whole funding of transportation projects? So if that application was put in with all the metrics, and everybody was understanding that this is how this application is being put forward, then at that point in time, yeah, we're like, we're good to go. This project's scope isn't changing. So when it's, when it's submitted, you don't get funding in stages anymore. This project was submitted, it was funded 100%, and has to be constructed within the six years identified in that program. So that's the whole point of making sure the application is, is solid to begin with, because when we get this funding, I have to deliver for the county.
But Shawn, what, and I piggyback on what he's saying, and I understand what you're saying, you know, it was, the county submitted this, okay? All right, but who did the design?
There is really no design yet. We came to the county and said, "Well, for 606, we know that 606 is developing. Let's look at an access management study to determine what options are there that need to happen between Route One and 95."
Who said that?
The department said. Let's look at that.
VDOT department?
Yes.
Okay.
So we worked with the county on scoping an access management study, worked with them on finding the land uses in the area, developed a process for the, similar to what was done on Route Three. And once we got the results, we sat with the county, we said, "Here are the different options. This is what we think should happen. What do you all think?"
This is the way it should happen also?
Not really the way it should happen, but I mean, this is what we recommend, but ultimately, it's the county's decision.
May I just jump in here? This is a little bit of what I talked about at our last meeting, that the board has set up a transportation committee to advise... that the board has set up a Transportation Committee to advise the board on transportation projects specifically. So the Transportation Committee was involved in, in this study, reviewing it, discussing it. They made a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And then the board endorsed moving forward with the plan last year before the HB2 application. So, so we've got, you know, the Transportation Committee looking intensively at transportation, but the Planning Commission wasn't really in that loop.
That, there we go. That's what happens, exactly. That here we set up here and it comes to us and, well, this is what we got and this is what we got. And just like, I mean, I was, what, what do we got? What do we got last meeting, you know? And well, I don't think property owners realized that's what we got. And so I'm dumbfounded. And I think somebody suggested that we have somebody from the Planning Commission on the Transportation Committee. And however, and then we say, I was so mixed up, I thought VDOT, you know, okay, you, you all did this all by yourself, huh? But they didn't. And, and we don't, and we're the last here. And we sitting up here saying, well, okay, we can't make decisions because we don't know what, what's going on that much. But you answered my question, Sean.
If there are no other questions at this point?
Oh, 606, my, my favorite one, the IMR. So the IMR is complete.
For 606?
Or 126.
For 126?
Yeah.
For the J ramp?
Yeah.
Yes, the IMR is complete.
That's complete?
Yes.
And at this point, I, I just trying to get an update. And, and the J ramp only move, doesn't move forward or does it move forward with improvements on Route 1 and Courthouse Road? Do you remember there were some issues there?
At this point in time, the J ramp is not moving forward. The county is elected to move forward with another project that was in the IMR to improve the ramp in Route 1, which essentially does the same thing as the J ramp.
Right. Well, I don't know if it does the same thing, but
It gets traffic freely flowing from 95 along Route 1 to South Point.
So that's going to do, and that came out of the IMR?
Yes, that was an alternative in the IMR.
Okay, all right. Now, does, does, out of curiosity, is that money, the funding for that particular portion is coming from where? Is that HB2 money?
Smart scale, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question on that. All right, now, so you're saying some of that has been changed, but whatever is going to be the same as a J ramp? Because where are all those people who's going to live in those apartments that we recommended approval on? On South Point Parkway? Is that going to be another, I mean, because I was understanding that this J ramp, you know, would help to take care, you know, of that traffic in that area there.
Well, the J ramp was trying to take traffic off of Route 1 and putting it directly onto South Point. It's what the J ramp essentially do, to get people to South Point to 208. So in looking at it, the J ramp could not stand up alone by itself to do that as an improvement. And that has to go through federal highways. The project that we're doing right now is only extending a portion of the ramp that we've currently got there on 95. So you essentially have two left turn lanes coming off.
Two left lanes coming off of what?
Two left lanes coming off of I-95.
On I-95, okay.
And, and one lane will be continuously all, all the way down to South Point. So you think about it. If you got a sign that says to Route 208, right lane on I-95 ramp. You get in that lane, you keep going all the way around to South Point Parkway. It's essentially the same thing that J ramp does, but it's going along Route 1 instead of directly connecting from I-95 as an exit to South Point Parkway.
And then what happens when you get to 208?
Well, that's another project that needs to be looked at.
That, see, I mean, and, and really, that's, I can, is the traffic going to back up? Where it's going to back up all the way to Route 1 since there's?
Well, let me talk about that too. This is talking about a lot of stuff, let's see. As a part of the J ramp study, which was an IMR, there was a planning study done that looked at 208, Route 1, and all the other potential improvements that were looked at, which were the Germana extension, the super ramp, the, a CD lane from, with another exit on 95 northbound from where essentially the hospital drive is, all the way back up. So it looked at a whole bunch of projects. And what that study showed was that 208 needs improvements in order for this area to work as a whole, 208 and Route 1.
Yes.
So the county applied for revenue sharing. They have these corridor studies that they're going to look at to figure out what needs to happen on 208 to help in the future. To figure out if there's small projects need to happen, does 208 need to be widened to eight lanes? I don't know. But I mean, we know there are grave concerns on South Point Parkway and it's continually to develop. So if we're trying to pump everybody from Route 1 to 208 on South Point Parkway, at some point in time, it's telling you either you're going to have to widen 208 or find another means.
Well, I mean, my goodness, the way those apartments are going up, they'll be up and we'll be studying for two or three more years. And that's what's going to, I mean, somebody's, it needs to say, okay, here's the funding, here's revenue sharing, let's get with it. We always have the cart before the horse. I mean, there's those apartments are just raving out there and I just don't know what's going to happen. I, I mean, and when that came before us, I was under the impression that all the J ramp, all the, you know, and all of this was going to come into, you know, a play about the same time so that we could, you know, get people moving.
And well, like I said
We're going to slow them down.
And with the J ramp, and we found out that there were going to be issues with South Point Parkway at 208 that we felt that
Yeah.
If you put an investment in for the J ramp that has to hold up for the long term, if you put it in now and in 10 years, you have a, a failing level of service because traffic is backed up from 208 all the way to CarMax, then the FHWA is not going to approve something that's going to not really solve the problem.
Mr. Chairman, just, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, but I think I'm right. But any monies that we would spend on the J ramp would have been our monies because revenue sharing wouldn't have worked on that. So I just want to point out that that would have been 100% county money, bond money, or however way we decided to do it. And, because it's not eligible for revenue sharing. And also, it's not HB2 money, it, it's totally a different thing. So that was when the IMR was being developed. And we start seeing that the IMR says, well, the J ramp only works. But the problem is you got to fix Route 1, you got to fix 208. If you're going to do the J ramp, and then you're going to put out millions of money on the J ramp, and then you're going to turn around and still have to have revenue sharing, which is a dollar for dollar on the other two. And that's, that's one of the, and then the whole thing with HB2, when it came along, everybody, it was before my time, I mean, it came after me. But it, it was trying to figure out how you're going to do the funding. But I just want to know for the other commission members to know that anything to do with the J ramp, because it was, FHWA was involved in it, was 100% total county money. There was no other where, no place else to go get any funding, anything if we, we had done the J ramp, so.
Well, what can we do with revenue sharing? What, how can we, I know we can get revenue sharing for what?
You can get the same projects you could have before. They, they've kind of reduced the amount of revenue sharing now in the state because
It, it used to be 10 million.
But you can still do that. But I'm saying the, the overall arcing amount of funds available for revenue sharing, it's supposed to be dwindling down because we're for, we want everybody to put in applications for the smart scale process or old HB2. So some of the, what the county did smart, what I thought was smart last, last submission was they put revenue sharing toward projects that they were putting through smart scale. And what that does, it offsets the total amount of cost for a project.
Right.
So if you've got a $20 million project estimate, the county puts up $5 million, that turns to 10, you're only requesting 10 million.
10 million, right.
So it increases your odds because you're not asking for as much funds.
Really? Because when I was on the Transportation Board, we had money way out here that we were grabbing from, getting from other people because there were not localities who was as fortunate as, as we were.
It's the same thing for revenue sharing still now. I mean, you still can do that. But I'm just saying that, that the, the strategy for utilizing revenue sharing now is a little bit different. And I look for this next cycle, for localities that put in applications, which we were very fortunate that most of the applications we put in, we got funding for. So let's say after this cycle of revenue sharing, you won't be able to apply, cycle of HB2 smart scale, you won't be able to apply for it for another two years. So I think during those two years, you're going to see localities putting forth revenue sharing projects that they did not get through that last smart scale
Right.
process.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to run out now.
Please, Chair, I'd go back to 606 one more time.
One more time.
One more.
Then we're moving on to the public hearing.
Now, 606 is going to be your proposed in four lane. What happens when you get to the bridge at 95?
That project is already under active procurement for
There will be four lane bridge here?
There will be a wider bridge there connecting with the improvements on the east side of 95.
And, well, that's my only question, but I have a statement to make. I agree, 606 needs some help. But I don't know if it's a wise thing to set potential property owners up to lose their business. I, I just want to know if there's something else we can do with that loss of the money or committing taxpayers' funds. It just doesn't seem as fair to, to the businesses there. The businesses are paying taxes to the county. So those, if any of those businesses fail because of this new highway, that's income to the county that is going to be gone. And, and we need to protect this, not just for the county's welfare, but for the property owners. As a property owner's, property rights advocate, I just, it just, it just runs me the wrong way that these people are facing the possibility of going out of business.
Well, well, that's why we go through the public process too. So I mean, that discussion will be had, one, I mean, right now, we're talking in theory, but the application was based on theory. Once we get survey done, get pencils on the paper, have something out to have a public hearing, we vet those prob, we vet those questions. If there's enough uproar and the citizens don't want it, then does the county really want to move forward with the project? Are you worried about losing the money if nobody wants the project? So I mean, that is up to the county.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have to, I have to say that. Since you, that's like, you know, okay, if we don't do this, you know, we're going to lose the money. So we're always like forced to do that. And Sean, you and I both know, as we go through the process, and, and I think you're right, there, there should be a good thorough process given it. But there's also, this plan, it's hard for me to believe that it can't be tweaked to some degree. I just have, because we haven't designed it yet. I know we have the Access Management, but to some degree, so, because I've seen too many plans that we've done and we've had to make
But you haven't seen it in smart scale.
No, I haven't done any of that.
And you're correct, you're talking about setting a precedent now across the state where a locality submits an application based on the premise of one project and you change it. So I, I just don't see how that's
Well, I guess my question is, because it has not been fully designed yet. I'll give you an example. The intersection at Thornburg, you know, right there where the Poco Loco is and everything else. And we had, I think it was probably a foot difference in the grade that was going to, wait a minute, let's just finish having a conversation. So that was designed, and obviously what happened in the field and what was there were two different things. It was corrected, we took care of it. You know, you guys took care of it. But the design of it, it wasn't, you know, even our VDOT commissioner drove by and saw it and said, hey, look, we need to do something there. So all I'm saying is, as we go through the process, it would behoove VDOT, you know, to look at anything that we can try to do, to try to tweak to some degree without major doing it. Because you really, you have a concept here. But I think HB2 money also is, we're trying to get from point A to point B. And it is a bottleneck. And we all know that, we need to correct this. I would just encourage you to continue to do that and you guys do a good job, so.
What is smart scale? I'm dumb.
I'm going to tell you right now, it's an acronym. And I couldn't begin to tell you because I don't have a cheat sheet. But based on the, the last name of it was HB2 and because of some other legislation in other states, we changed the name to smart scale. And it has to do with the actual acronym of the, the metrics that we use to measure these projects.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll send you an email though.
All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of this meeting. And I appreciate everybody's patience walking through this. I presume that we have people signed up to speak.
Yes, sir, I have two. First signed up is Robert Smith Deal, followed by Dennis O'Caslow.
As you, yeah, let me just give you the guidelines here. As you come up, give your name and address to the podium. You'll see a box on the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. The light will be green. When it turns yellow, you'll have one minute. And when it turns red, I would ask that you wrap it up because I'm sure other people would want to speak, so. Thank you.
May I ask, I'm here with three members of our, that were signed up here. Can I also have their time?
If you represent the organization, you'll have five minutes.
Okay, great. Good evening to all. I am a little bit surprised. I worked with Don Young in Congress with some bills with motorcycle safety in the past. And we believe in hearings and, and hearing the, the families and, and the people and the businesses that we affect when decisions are made. We, we have these businesses, Poco Loco, Thornburg, Self Storage. We are not happy. We ask this commission to not let this project go forward till everyone has heard. Thornburg, for an exam, for, as an example, that, that medium goes right past our front gate. The actual four lanes, I, I saw them measuring today and I was really, really upset. As in one side of our business, the, the gate is like four feet from the road. When they designed this, our buildings were not built, but we had a project in 2005 for Thornburg where we're going to add two more buildings. Well, they're built, you can't see them there. But on that corridor, that, that, those last two buildings that we put up are right next to the road. Wouldn't someone that was studying to build, to make this, this road wider, wouldn't have a thought of looking at what projects, what are the plans for all this land before you go ahead and do something like this? I mean, i, i, it is not right. Poco Loco, there's no way a customer or family that gets off of 95 and wants to, to go in and have their dinner or lunch to get back on the highway, they're going to be so upset, they might never make that left or find a, a place where to turn. At our place, we get, we serve so many military families. We get semis to come into our business to pick up these families' items, belongings because they're, they're shipping them out to Japan or wherever they're going, somewhere, another base. Where are these sem, how are they going to get in, in, in and out of our business? If they're going to get back to 95, they're going to make a right? Where are they going to turn when they go to Route, when they, they get to Route 1? I mean, you know, you, you look at this, I mean, it's like no one, how, how many, I mean, excuse me, Sean, VDOT, I mean, I mean, have you been there lately? Why? Why did this come up? Why did we decide that we wanted VDOT to, who, who was this road going to benefit? The track? Because this is the, I was, back in May, almost an hour, it took me off of 95 to get to Route 1. Almost an hour. Now today, what was going on? There was a small activity at, at the track. That's the only reason that happened. Every Sunday, Saturdays and Sundays, what happens on 95 going northbound? How many of you tried to go to DC at, at midday? So you have to stop this, this project and, and find ways for families to be able to get to these businesses. Because right now, the only business I see that this is going to benefit is the track. Yes, we need to get those cars to flow back to Route 1. But hey, you know, we invested a lot of money in these businesses, everything that we have, mortgages, everything. So it, it will So it will hurt us. It will hurt us, and I believe that we just jumped the gun on this one. I just want to thank you again, and I really want you to consider, reconsider going ahead with this. There's a lot more studies that should be done, and you should think about us. Thank you.
Ready? Yeah, my name is Chris Smith Deal, I'm the owner of Thornburg Self Storage. I was asking if she would put the picture back up on the screen. The biggest complaint I have in some of the sorry things I see is, you have to make a U-turn to go to McDonald's, Taco Bell, it's going to be a nightmare forever for anybody trying to get in there. For a fire truck to make a U-turn, it's going to be almost impossible. That play, the road flows now, but you block it up where people can't cross the road, for anybody, like I say, leaves my business, they get dumped on Route 1. A car can make a U-turn, but I have people coming in, moving with trailers behind their cars and trucks, they're not going to make a U-turn there, and when they do, they're going to have to take both lanes on the other side of the road to make that U-turn. And on the other side of the road, across from me, is an empty, humongous piece of land. Walmart's talked about going there, places like that. That section of road is going to be a nightmare with that center section in there, and there's just no reason for it. People make a U-turn to go to McDonald's, I mean, that place is packed all the time. His restaurant, Loco, on the corner, people can't get in there. People, if they can't get in there, they don't come back. You lose your business. Same with my place, if people can't get in there, in there, out of there, they're going to go somewhere else. We have probably 30 of our units, estimated, rented to businesses, coming in and operating their, as a pickup and drop-off point at air business. So we probably 10% to 20% of our business is people that come in with not tractor trailers, but sometimes they have a straight truck or whatever. If they, part of our, our sales pitch is 30, we're 30 seconds from 95. But if they leave my location, they take a right, you dump them out on Route 1 somewhere, and then they got to find someplace to turn around. There's no place for them to turn around and go the other way. That, it's stupid to say you can go ahead and make a little U-turn, not everybody can make that U-turn. Some people can, but the gentleman there said, safety than a fire truck. You know, if we have, you know, a fire halfway down the road, he's got to go up there, and if it's busy traffic, you get turned around, U-turn. I just think the plan is got, lacks a lot of credibility. I guess that's all I'll say now, but thank you very much for your time.
I need to say something. My name is Jose Ramirez, I'm the owner of Poco Loco. I'm a little nervous, you know, pissed off, because I've been looking to open a restaurant for 30 years, and this is my opportunity. And now we have something, and now, if they do that, maybe I lost my business. So who helped the small business? Nobody. They do the job, they live, they don't care. You know, they lose, they leave all the trash around my building, I clean them up, I never say something. But I think now is the time to say something, you know? I'm not happy with this, and I'm no, I don't want to lose my restaurant. If it's, I think that little house belonged to the community. I'm sorry, maybe my English is not too good, but I think Thornburg is that house. Why? Because it's old, it's antique. They stay over there for many, many years, and you know that. So I think that house belonged to the community, not only because it's mine. That's Thornburg, that's Poco Loco. And I don't want to go anywhere, I want it to stay there. And I don't want somebody to put like, like the things they wanted to put in Mexico, you know? That big bridge, you know, the, you know, block, they wanted to put something, nobody going inside of my business. So who paid for my mortgage? Who paid for my rent? This guy? No, right? So somebody has to do something, you know, it's about time. If you want to say something, say, you know, I'm not happy, and I don't want that, if they want to do four lanes, okay, do the four lane, but not put something in the middle. And believe me, I've been in this for four years, and 606, I never have one accident, I never saw one accident. But in Route 1, it's one accident every single week. But in 606, never happened, never. I never saw one accident. So wow, now they say safety, safety for what? Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak that's not on the list? Yes, ma'am. You can speak to the Parkway as part of this package. Certainly.
Gloria Henkel. I live at 10717 Gordon Road. I live in that little corner up there on Gordon Road. I live in a log home there, it's 30 years old, it's, it needs to be updated. Now, I know all this has been talked about for many years and taken out, thrown out, and now all of a sudden, it's back. I want to know, is there something coming up that this is going to be soon? Should I do the updates on the house? What should I do? Because I went to all those meetings back years ago, when they wanted to do that Parkway. I mean, you know, maybe it's going to take my land, maybe it's not. But what has brought this up after so many years? That's what has me concerned. And is it something that's going to be in the near future? You know, Doug, I'm not wealthy, I mean, I mean, I got a plan ahead. And if this is something that, that you all know is going to be coming up in the next five or 10 years, I'd like to know. Why did this come up at this point? Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at this point? Any other questions, follow-up questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Ms. Burns.
Just kind of a statement, more than a question, that first of all, what the planning commission is being asked to do is incorporate in the comprehensive plan, changes to the thoroughfare plan, and that's basically what we deal with, in terms of, and we'll deal with that issue shortly, but in terms of some of the other projects moving forward and how they're funded and all that is really at the purview of VDOT and the Board of Supervisors. I just want to clearly understand what, what our responsibility is. And our responsibility is, some of these that we've talked about, that we want to update and put in our thoroughfare plan, you know, we'll consider that shortly, and we'll vote that accordingly, but that is really, as far as stopping something, we make recommendations, we don't necessarily stop it, but we also voice our concerns. But I just want to make that as a kind of a statement, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Carter.
I just want to clarify this, that this gentleman here is here at the goodness of his heart. He doesn't make those decisions, so he is an employee, just like most of us are employees with different people, and there are decisions who, which are made, but they're made from the top on down, on down, on down. And I just appreciate him being here so much, because we were lost, I mean, and he's, he has taken his time and has explained many of the areas here. And for instance, it's something on the thoroughfare that I'm not pleased with, also that he spent many hours with a year ago. And when I looked at the thoroughfare plan, I thought, my goodness, that's been changed, why has that been changed? You know? Well, he didn't change it. That was changed at the county level, so I just, you know, I want to say that. We, we can't blame, you know, VDOT for all of it either, and so, but we just all have to work together, and I just want to say that. And thank you so much for coming, Sean.
Yeah, before we, I asked for a motion on this, just to echo a couple of things. What you're hearing tonight is the challenges we face in this county with our growth, balancing our growth, and taking into accommodation our businesses, safety, getting people to and from their homes, to their workplace, and it's no easy task. And it, there are difficult decisions that have to be made here, and I can tell you that it's a lot, a lot of hard work. And I thank you, Sean, for coming tonight. I know you've put a lot into it, but this, this, in this particular case, this is something that the county identified as a need, and we went through the HB2 process, and because of that need, it scored well enough to get the funding. And I can tell you, there's a lot of competition across the state for that funding, and I know a lot of communities that did not get the projects that Spotsylvania County was lucky enough to get. So I have full confidence that as we work through this process, that the voices will be heard, and smart decisions will be made, but it's going to be no easy task. And I thank everybody for coming out tonight and speaking to this. And Sean, thank you for coming, and Dan and Wanda for the presentation. At this point, if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion on this matter.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve CPA 16-0001, with the exception of including the Route 606 corridor plan and the concept to extend the Spotsylvania Parkway to Gordon Road. I further recommend that action on the Route 606 corridor plan be deferred until after VDOT completes its public hearing process, and that the Spotsylvania Parkway Extension Concept Road be removed from this comprehensive plan and amended, amended and go through public hearings as a new amendment in the fall to allow greater participation from the citizens of this county.
Second.
I will call the vote. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, our funding's all right on, everything, all right. Even though we did what we did, we still got the funding, okay? Doug, you got, you got off easy tonight.
I did.
Sean, thank you.
I appreciate it.
We appreciate that, we appreciate you coming.
It's no easy job, we appreciate it.
Yes, we do.
What's next, Wanda? What do we? Any other public, new business?
Yes, under new business, I wanted to bring up again an item that was discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting. There was, I just brought the idea up, but Mr. Newhouse, you were absent, as was Mr. Thompson, so I didn't feel that it was appropriate for the Planning Commission to take any action until you were brought in the loop. The, as I mentioned earlier, that there is a Transportation Committee that's been appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Several board members sit on the committee. There are members of the business community, the schools, citizens from the different voting districts are appointed, and VDOT and FAMPO are very much involved in those meetings, and they really kind of roll up their sleeves and, and study these transportation items, and then make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So as we went through this process, it became apparent that there is a disconnect when something then comes to the Planning Commission for a thoroughfare plan update, and you all have not been involved in those discussions. So the thought was that perhaps a Planning Commissioner could be appointed to the Transportation Committee, but before going to the Board with that as a recommendation, wanted to run that by the Planning Commission to see what your thoughts are on that. The idea is that it would be an appointment made by the Chair of the Planning Commission to serve on the Transportation Committee, and that way, there would be that communication between the two, and you would be more involved in their discussions.
Thank you. I would take comment from fellow Commissions on that, if there are any.
Mr. Chairman, regardless how we go about it, I think that the missing element is that the Commission gets a face-to-face report with someone, whether it's our staff or a Commission member, of what's, what was happening at the last meeting, maybe a, you know, every monthly report or something like that, but at least a public report that we can ask questions and share. That's my only thought, regardless how the Commission decides to go about it.
Mr., it's, absolutely, but however, I mean, just like we had Mr. Nelson before us today, tonight, and we had Doug, our transportation person for the county. During the process, I believe that we need to have someone that's in the transportation area before us, and so that we can ask the questions that we were asking tonight, that they can inform us, you know, more on what's happening and what's going on. As I stated, it goes, it comes home to me, and there I am, I thought, what in the world am I looking at? But however, if I have someone there that I can ask questions, that we can ask questions to upfront, we wait too long before we are in the process. That's what happens on the Planning Commission. And that's, that's my point of it. I mean, you know, whether it's appointment, but it's like.
Any other comments? Do you need an action on that tonight, or is it, what do you recommend?
Well, I don't need action tonight, if you want to think about it, and the Planning Commission could, there's no, this is not a timely item. The Board is in the process actually of appointing members to the Transportation Committee, a number of the members' terms expired, so we don't even have enough to have a quorum at this point in time. I expect that probably by, by September, there will likely be enough for a quorum. But I do need to bring this to the Board of Supervisors for them to consider. But if the Planning Commission doesn't like the idea, I don't know that I want to go to the Board and suggest something that, that you all will not be happy with.
Mr. Chairman, does that need, does it need a motion? I mean, for the, for the Chair?
That's what I'm asking.
Because the Board, eventually, the bottom line is the Board of Supervisors decide whether who's going to go on there.
The Board Chairman will, you know, make, but some could be done from this thing. I think what Wanda, in her defense, is just saying, the Commission as a whole would like to have participation in it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can't imagine the Board saying, sorry.
No, absolutely not.
I don't want to take this to the Board and then hear the Planning Commission hates the idea.
No, from the Chair's position, and I think you've heard from some of the members here, the Commissioners here, that we fully support that.
Okay.
And if, if I have that authority to appoint somebody, then all, by all means, we'll do that. I just didn't know if that was required by motion, or if we.
Not at this point. I'm perfectly happy with just that consensus, that it's a good idea, so I will present that to the Board and see what their thoughts are.
All right.
Well, I, may I add to that?
Yes, ma'am.
And when we say about a Commission member being, if they are appointed, they are, then that gives the Commission, that Commission member to say, okay, we need to take this to the whole Commission, Planning Commission members, early. You know, we need to start this dialogue early, because like I said, so many things are just to.
Fire along in the process.
Exactly.
I would agree. So to wrap this up, if I, if I send out an email or talk with a Commission member about joining this, and then I presume that we would have the ability for that person, the Commission member, to report to us, or have you report, or something of that nature?
Yes, the bylaws are set up to allow for committees, so certainly, you know, a committee of one could report out to the, the Commission as a whole on whatever occurred at any Transportation Committee meeting. And what needs to happen at this point in time is the Board needs to change the charter for the Transportation Committee, so they will need to take formal action, and I'll probably put this on the August 9th meeting.
Okay, very good. And so the timing will be that within the next three weeks, two to three weeks, I will discuss with a Commission member, or if there's an interest, approach me about it, then recommend to you. Okay, I got it. Any other new business?
The only other item is the August 3 Planning Commission meeting. The only item on that agenda at this point in time is the lighting ordinance that was authorized for public hearing at the last meeting. That is not pressing, and it would be, I imagine, a very short item, so if the Planning Commission would rather push that to the second meeting in August, when I know we will have some other item. will have some other items, we could cancel that first meeting in August.
Very well, and I don't think I need a motion to make that happen, do we?
No, I don't think so, I think you agree.
That was just a personal joke, a personal joke there.
Okay, we'll cancel it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and cancel that. Any other new business?
No.
Any other public comment? Very good, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So, second.